Okay, we'll call to order the April 15th meeting of District 99 Board of Education. Call the roll, please.
Bill White.
Here.
Julia Beckman.
Here.
Deb Boyle.
Here.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Nancy Kupka.
Keith Mattoon.
Here.
Terry Pavicic.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Let's stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item on our agenda, item three is the approval of the minutes. Members of the board have an opportunity to review the minutes.
Mr. White, before we start that, I would just like to say a few words. Since this is in fact your last meeting, or complete meeting as president of the board, and the May 6 meeting, you will begin the board meeting, then you will take your leave, I think it's appropriate to say just a few things to recognize your service. And one of the things I would like to talk about, about Bill's service, has been his ongoing work with the policy manual review and revision process. Prior to 2009, the board policy manual had not undergone a comprehensive review in decades, as evidenced by the policies that had not been reviewed since the 1970s, 1980s, or 1990s throughout the policy manual. And the policy manual also lacked policies that were now required by law. And so, this is a very important undertaking by the board. The scope of the task is such that only about 70 percent of the manuals been reviewed after four years, even though this is something the board has worked on almost weekly over that time period. And Bill has had a tremendous leadership role in the process. His skills as a wordsmith, his legal knowledge have been invaluable part of the work. And that continues, but certainly Bill has made a very important contribution to that. Bill also presided over the board during the implementation phase of the master site plan, the implementation, or initial implementation of the strategic plan, the first stages of development of the Common Core curriculum. Since Bill has been president, the board has decided to televise the meetings, so now this information can be shared with many hundreds of people who go online. And we will certainly miss Bill and his insights about the role of public schools in our community, as well as the state and nation as a whole. So, Bill, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
(Applause).
Okay, let's see how fast we can.
Well, actually, I'd like to say a few words, too. In fact, it's my pleasure to address and acknowledge our outgoing District 99 Board of Education President, Mr. Bill White. Bill has been a true advocate for excellence in education. He is an extraordinarily intelligent man, naturally a product of District 99, who has done his best to help guide and facilitate discussion among administration and the Board of Education, so that way we can reach consensus on decisions that affect our students, our staff, and the taxpayers of the district. He has deliberated thoughtfully and thoroughly about all matters that come before the board. For the past four years, he has worked diligently and tirelessly updating our board policies, as Dr. McDonald had said. He has presided over the board during the implementation of both our master site plan and our strategic planning. And as board president, he has logged many additional hours and taken on additional responsibilities that often are overlooked and sometimes underappreciated. I am certain that Bill will continue to play a role in advocating, promoting, and implementing, especially science, technology, engineering, and math, in our public school systems, since it is something that is just very near and dear to his heart. On a personal note, I would like to publicly thank him for his support and his friendship over the last four years, and wish him the best in his future endeavors. So, thank you, Bill, for your service to the District 99 Board of Education.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
And we do have cake, but that's after we're finished, then we get our work done.
We have to earn it.
Okay, can we go on to the minutes? Or do more people want to say nice things about me?
You've got enough.
Okay, we have item three, approval of the minutes. Any comments, corrections, clarifications? Otherwise, the chair would have had a motion to approve the minutes.
So, moved?
Member Davenport moves.
Second.
Member Beckman seconds. Call the vote, please.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Nancy Kupka.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Terry Pavicic.
Aye.
Bill White.
Aye. The motion carries. The minutes are approved. Item four on the agenda is our first reception of visitors. Anybody in the audience wish to address the board on matters on our agenda this evening? Okay, we'll close the first reception of visitors. Move on to item five, recommendations and reports to the superintendent. Five A, I guess the third quarter financial report. Dr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. White. It's customary for the administration to provide the board with a quarterly financial report, leading up to the end of the year report. That will come at the end of the fiscal year. And of course, this is Mr. Stalyn's purview, and I will turn the microphone over to him.
All right. You can go along on your iPads. I have it for the, it should be coming up in a second here. There we go. This is the same handout that's on the information in the board packet. I'm going to start with the back exhibit, which is the fund balances, the year-to-date fund balances. And I'm just going to highlight maybe two or three things that are stated in the narrative, but just for the sake of the audience at home and maybe the audience that's here tonight. Overall fund balance is 22.3 million. That's in the top section, all the way to the right-hand side, the bottom total, 22.3 million, compared to 24.1 million down below in the blue section, for an actual reduction of $1.8 million as of the third quarter. And often we have swings like this on a quarterly basis. Typically, I would expect the fund balance to be up a little bit, but when we looked into the detail and explained it in the revenue and expenditure sections, which I'll cover in a minute, it made sense. The summary on the bottom really kind of tells the picture. If you look at the revenues collected column and the difference there, our revenues are only up $247,000, but expenditures are up $2 million. Transfers are actually up a little bit, because we have some transfers to the debt service and site and construction fund that are a little bit higher at this point in time. And that all adds across to get to that change. By looking at it, we're not concerned in this change, because by the end of the year it should come out. We have a few things that do contribute to it. One is that we do have an expectation for our revenues minus expenditures and transfers to actually have a $400,000 reduction in overall fund balance. So, we budgeted for that deficit this year. Remember, the larger part of that was for the plumbing renovations to North Campus that we added to the budget at the very end. And so, that's one part of it. Another part is that we still have about $400,000 of expenditures in the building fund where we will get direct reimbursement for, we confirmed that amount today, that's why it's a little more fresh, it's $402,000, something in that range, that we'll get reimbursed for the storm damage that we had at our both campuses that just really did damage to roofs in both schools that we couldn't address in the very first summer. We took care of it this last summer, and that's still expected to come in in the next few weeks. So, we missed the third quarter to get it into this report. So, that is a part of the expenditure increase that we have, other than this normal budgetary increases there. And we also have, on the revenue side, a reduction. We did have to refund a certain amount of waivers, or fees for students that became waived, and that's really the big story. And if anything, a thing that we take from this going forward is something we, it is kind of a permanent change. We are up to 26, almost 27 percent of free and reduced students. And partly, in part during the middle of the year, they started the process in October, but really didn't complete it until January. The State Board of Education started trying to cross-match Medicaid-eligible students with their home districts. And they sent lists, and these were 200-page lists of data that we had to check and then certify back to the state. And so, that's why it took several months. And it was very new for them, too, so that they really didn't have a system in place to accept this information coming back from schools. But once we verified Medicaid-eligible students and their siblings, so if you have a high school age sibling, they are correctly saying that those individuals should be considered free and reduced for our National School Lunch program, because that's what the federal laws would require. And by our policy, if someone is, an individual is eligible for free and reduced, we will waive their fees. Now, it's a tough situation, in that many of these parents had already paid their fees and weren't expecting it. We had a few parents that refused to take the money back and actually sent it back to the school. And we had several other parents that said, yes, we were deemed Medicaid-eligible, the state still has us as that status, but we're not really, we don't feel we deserve that anymore, and we've been trying to get off the state's records. So, some of this, we hope will get cleaned up in future years, but it's still, for now, gave us, it's higher than, much higher than we've normally ever had, really, and higher than we expect to carry going forward. We hope it'll get cleaned up a little bit, but for now, we had to refund a certain portion of their fees. And so, we are down a little bit on the revenue side for that. It's not, you know, huge, but it's just something of note that I wanted you to be aware of, that when you look at our state report card at the end of the year, it will reflect something close to 27 percent free and reduced, unless there's some changes that the state can clean up by the end of the, because not only do the individual students, but any siblings. And that was actually very difficult for us to track down, because there's often different last names and different, so it was a difficult thing for our system to pick up. But overall, the $1.8 million is not alarming to me. I believe we'll be, we're still in line. If we look at the individual revenues and expenditures, and I'm just going to keep it big here, looking at just the combined fund basis, our taxes are all collected. We'll have a little bit more that might come in in dribs and drabs, but we're 100 percent collected there. Move this to the right there. Replacement taxes is more in line with what we expect the budget to be this year. Interest income, that's really something that we noted last year. It was, if you look at last year, $524,000. This is just cash collections. And actually, some of that was for revenue that was earned in prior years, but just was paid at the end of the maturity. And there was about $300,000 reduction in there. And so, that we corrected it, and when we changed it to the modified accrual basis at the end of the year. So, last year's was unusually high, and it needed to be adjusted down. The $108,000 now is actually more where we're trending. We did pick up, I think it's about $4.7 million in tax anticipation warrants of other school districts this year. It's relatively short-term, less than a year in duration, but it's nearly double what we earn in the other accounts. So, we're happy to get that a little bit, and we'll get that at the end of, when those mature. Really, nothing, other than we see some food service drop because of the waivers. We will collect federal and state dollars for those students, they will pay for their lunches that way, but it doesn't come in in the food service line item anywhere, it's not collected in the cafeteria, so that will have that, cause that line to be down. And our registration fees are down a little bit because of the refunds that we credit. There still are some registrations for summer school and other things coming up that'll bring that line item up to a more normal balance. And then, just a general state aid and other state aid, categorical aid, we're actually pretty much in line with last year, and actually roughly the same position. There's, the state owes us about $1.6 million, which is just about what they owed us last year, at this time. If we look at the expenditures, and that's the last piece of the multi-year here, we're really trending right in line with everything. The only thing, as I mentioned before, that's up a bit there is the purchase services, and that's really where we've paid for the contractor services that repaired the roofs. And when we take $400,000 off of that line item, because if you receive money in the same year that you make an expenditure, if it's dollar-for-dollar, the state does want us to offset the expenditure, so that's where we will put it. It won't go into a revenue account. It'll go right against the purchase services, and we'll drop that by $400,000. And then, really, overall, that brings us right in line with last year. So, everything's looking good right now. Again, the one takeaway here is the free and reduced, that we would need to adjust future revenues, at least move them around a little bit, and also more for the registration fees than anything. And that's it.
Questions?
Mark, what regard to the free and reduced lunch? Do we expect that to come back again next year? Or is this like a permanent readjustment?
I think what happened at the state level is, so many schools bombarded them with the same information we did, that a lot of these parents, or several of these parents, no longer feel they should be. It was like seven, eight years ago, they were Medicaid-eligible, haven't been taken off the rolls anymore, and their situations have changed, and that their lists need to be updated. So, they were bombarded by schools with this complaint, because everybody had to do the same thing. Everybody at our meetings was saying, we're refunding these fees, and the parents are yelling at us, basically, what are you doing? You know, so, I do hope that they'll correct that next year. I know that the state is really understaffed, and so I don't have the highest of hopes, but I know that there's enough screaming by the schools that they, I think they'll at least clean up those lists, to the extent they can.
Thank you. At least maybe it won't go on and on and on. That's good.
Yeah, and there is an incentive for them to do that, because if they do incorrectly report Medicaid-eligible students to us, they get funding from the Fed as well for this program, and the Fed would reject those. And so, the state would lose money. So, they do have an incentive, other than just to be correct for us.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. The next item, Dr. McDonald, what's up next?
Yes, we have additional textbooks to bring forward for review. We were not quite prepared to have all our textbooks available when we first did this in February. We have several others, based on some of the new courses in the Common Core curriculum work that we've undergone. And Dr. Minor is not here tonight. Mrs. Cardy, do you have anything to add?
I would just add that the math proposal for Math 1 and Math 1S is late coming to the board because of the Common Core, because this being so recent, there were not a lot of options early into the process. We did anticipate this. We did look at six different sets of resources and textbooks, and narrowed down from there based on some must-haves. So, the reason that that proposal is late is due to the Common Core, and we bring that to you in the second wave. With the French textbook, we wanted to, as we did last year with some textbooks, have the most recent copyright for our students. So, that's the primary reason for the BND as well.
Okay, any questions about these recommendations?
And as with, as the case with the other textbooks brought forward in February, these will go on display for at least 30 days, and that'll probably mean that these will be officially approved at the June board meeting.
Okay. Item 5C, freedom of information requests?
We had a single freedom of information request, and that was fulfilled by Mr. Stalyn.
Okay. Item six via the consent agenda, looks like there's six subparts. The chair invites a motion to prove the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Member Beckman moves.
Second.
Member Kupka seconds. Call the vote, please.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Nancy Kupka.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Terry Pavicic.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Bill White.
Aye. The motion passes. The consent agenda's been approved. Item 7A, resolution on 2012 tax rates. Dr. McDonald?
And I will defer to Mr. Stalyn for this report.
There we go. Back up on the screen up there. We do this every year. We, after our levy request in November, sometimes it's December, but last couple of years it's been in November. We make a request, we don't know what our new construction values are, we estimate those, but we don't know for sure. Then, in the last week of March, we're given a directive by the county clerk, once we are told what the actual new construction values are, what our total rate is, and then they provide a simple extension by individual fund for us, and prorate it down on a prorata basis. Rather than let them prorate it and take from individual funds, we concentrate it all in one fund. And you can see what, the recommendation I have this year was to reduce, actually, the ed fund balance. If you notice, the operations and maintenance fund is higher this year. It's much higher than it typically has been, and we are addressing a negative balance in that fund. It really doesn't matter if we have negative individual fund balances, because of the way that property tax caps work. We could actually eliminate the operations and maintenance fund and combine it into the educational fund. We could, you know, we have pretty much total flexibility with our operating funds at this point, because of the way the property taxes work, property tax caps work. But in this case, we're reducing the educational fund levies, because the total fund balance of that fund is adequate, and we're trying to move up the balance in the operations and maintenance fund. And really, that's, you can see, if there were no tax caps in place, we have justification based on our operating budget and needs in the district. We could have levied another $1.7 million, but this is the, what we would say is a tribute to the loss or the savings, if you look at it in a positive way, from the taxpayer's perspective, under the tax cap.
Any questions?
Yeah, and that's actually, the action is, has already been performed. The county clerk requires a ratification of, we had to turn it in. He gives you one week to turn it over and turn it around and give him notification, and that's part of his process, so that he can get tax bills out on a timely basis, so.
Okay, any other questions for?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll have one more thing. There's a resolution at the end that would be asked of you to approve.
Can I just say something? So, this is, for clarity, back earlier, we had approved up to a certain amount. It was, there was a percentage, a 3-point-something percent, right? And so, the actual amount is 1.7 percent? Am I, basically, am I understanding this right?
You mean the total rate, you mean?
Yeah.
Is it, yes. And so, the percentage increase that we approved for existing taxpayers is 3 percent, because that's what was allowed by the tax cap for this year. Last year was 1.5 percent.
Got it.
This year it's 3 percent, and that's tied to Consumer Price Index. And what we don't know is the little extra piece up there that's new construction, and so the actual revenue is a little bit more, because we're able to levy on new property added to the tax rolls.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Could I ask just a quick question?
Absolutely, yeah.
With regard to TIF districts, and one thing and another, is there, are there any TIF districts that are coming off, or being added on, that will impact us?
Nothing, no, nothing new. There was one, last year, there was a Bolingbrook TIF that came off, and actually, almost doubled, it more than doubled our new construction value last year. But we did recognize that as an anomaly. It doesn't happen very often. And we haven't had a final accounting for that TIF. If there are any TIF dollars left, they should be apportioned and sent back out to the taxing entities.
Oh, okay.
We have not seen a final report from them yet. But, so there may be some other dollars coming totally separate from this, but there's no other TIFs rolling off in the near future.
At least have the one. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, the chair invites a motion to adopt the resolution, which was presented to us and is shown on the screen.
So moved.
Member Davenport moves.
Second.
Member Kupka seconds. Call the vote, please.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Nancy Kupka.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
No.
Terry Pavicic.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Bill White.
Aye. The motion passes. The resolution's been adopted, and I guess I'll sign it later tonight. Next item on our agenda, item 7B, approval of the premiums for the employee of medical and dental plans. Dr. McDonald?
Mr. White, the administration reviewed this process with the board at the workshop meeting last week, and now it is time to approve the recommendations that are coming out of that workshop meeting. Mr. Stalyn?
We spent enough time at the workshop, but just, you know, we, our reserves are very solid right now. They're higher than the target range that we have. We did not increase our premiums last year, thinking that the normal trend increases in claims would start to erode the reserves, but we actually had a very good year again. So, we're, this'll be three years in a row, we've not had to increase our main program, our PPO program. And so, we are again, not proposing any increase for that plan. We hope that trend will actually, at some point, bring these reserves down, and that would be, it'd be great if they keep growing, but I think eventually, what typically can happen is you may have, after five or six years, a very moderate increases or no increases, you can have a 20 percent here. And so, that's really why we need those reserves, but we don't need it at this level. And so, we're going to recommend no increase in the PPO plan. The HMOs are run, in the medical side, are run by Blue Cross, and they are requiring a 5.1 percent increase in those plans. And then, in our dental plan, we did make some benefit adjustments a year ago, and our, that plan is starting to follow trend a little bit, so we, we're recommended by Hub International to increase the dental PPO by 5 percent as well. I think it may be 5.1 percent there.
Okay. Well, we did have an extensive discussion on this topic last week at the workshop. Do any board members have any further questions this evening before we invite a motion? Hearing none, the chair invites a motion to adopt these recommendations for the dental and healthcare. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Okay, member Beckman moves.
Second.
Member Pavicic seconds. Call the vote, please.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Terry Pavicic.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Nancy Kupka.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Bill White.
Aye. Motion carries. Those recommendations have been passed. See, next up, item 7C, is the first of the construction contract award bids for this evening.
Is this you, Mr. Shock, first?
Yes.
We have two people presenting tonight. Mr. Shock will present the first package. Mr. Colletier presents the second package.
A little bit unusual, we had seven construction bids open in two sessions this month, and that's why you see two packets here. And each of the proposals have an aggregate amount, as opposed to awarding seven separate bids. We're awarding seven bids in two packages. And really, partly because one package was from one architectural firm, and the other one came through another one also. And this is only the beginning of the bids. As usual, we will have four or five more come in in the next month or two that we'll bring to the Board of Education.
These are all part of the capital plan that we discussed with the board last fall. Is that correct?
Yes. The Board of Education saw the recommended capital improvement plan, and this is following along with that plan. And in the aggregate, we're within budget. Some are a little higher, some are a little lower, but in the aggregate, they all fit within our budget. The first group is for asphalt work, HVAC work, and electrical work at the two campuses. And very briefly, asphalt reconstruction of the north parking lot at South High School. That's the parking lot next to the tennis courts. And in the 30 years that we've been doing it, that parking lot has not had a reconstruction. We've been able to get our money's worth out of that parking lot, but it's time to do it before we lose the base.
I was going to say, it needs it.
Yes, it does. The HVAC work is a continuation of upgrading our HVAC systems at the two campuses. This is at North High School, and it's the air handler systems in the main gym, or the purple gymnasium. Bring that ventilation system up to code, it's badly in need of that. And the third one is electrical improvements. This is a combination. It includes the electrical work that goes with the HVAC project, and it also is replacement of the existing lighting system in the two main gymnasiums, one at each campus. Those fixtures are out of manufacture, and we're going with an LED system, which will bring us fast improvement in lighting levels, and energy conservation, similar to what we did in the parking lots last summer. So, with that, all three of these bidders were the low bidders. With all three of these bidders, they've all worked in District 99 before, and we did a very complete scope investigation to make sure that nothing was missed. And we're pleased that the numbers came in where they did. Would recommend that you approve these three contractors.
Any questions for Mr. Shock before I invite a motion?
I just, I just have a question. Mr. Shock, with all the HVAC work that's been going on, I know that it's still uncomfortable in the schools in the summer, and I'm just wondering, are we expecting that it's going In the schools, period. I couldn't really say in the gymnasium, but I know it's in classrooms.
Classrooms, too.
Well, of course, we're not air-conditioned in the vast majority of classrooms. All class, all construction since 2000, our standard is air-conditioned. We do a major remodel. So everything built in the master facility plan was air-conditioned, except for the athletic facilities. North High School Jim, and Jim Colletier can really speak about this better than I can, but the system that was designed and built in 1957 is, it's not only old and difficult to maintain, but the standards have changed for ventilation, not air conditioning. I'm just talking about fresh air exchange. We can, we've always been able to heat it properly, but we can't ventilate it during the warmer months. And when we put all of the occupants in there for an assembly or competitive games, it gets very stuffy, and we expect this improvement to be vastly superior to what we've got now. But it's still not air-conditioned.
Are you just asking about the air conditioning or the heating?
Yeah, I think I'm a little confused about what was air-conditioned and what was not in terms of classrooms.
Okay, the new wings at both campuses in 2000 were, are air-conditioned. And all of the offices are, most all of the offices are air-conditioned, resource centers, computer labs, and auditoriums, libraries.
Cafeteria.
Yeah.
The older wings at North, 27, parts of 57 are not.
So it's easier to say classrooms built prior to 2000 are not air-conditioned. And that's the majority of the classrooms in our schools.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
That'd be consistent.
Okay, I have four projects. Not exactly.
We're taking them one at a time?
Yeah.
Okay, the chair invites a motion.
So moved.
Member Davenport moves.
Second.
Member Pabisich, seconds. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Terry Pabisich.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Bill White.
Aye. That motion passes. That bid package has been approved. We go to the next item.
I'm sorry to go early. Four projects, roofing, painting, flooring, and locker work. The roofing work is at North High School. It's above the loading dock roof. Also includes the canopy that will be demolished and reconstructed. The painting work.
It's at South High.
It's the auditorium, including the ceilings, walls, and also some trim work and gypsum board and acoustical wall panels. Flooring work also at South, library carpet, and the resilience floor in the small gymnasium. So that both will be replaced. And the locker work is at South High also, and that's athletic locker rooms and lower-level workroom and fitness areas at South High included. Twenty-four bids requested, 17 received. We've worked with all the low bidders, District 99, in the past, so they're acceptable to us. The total aggregated amount is within budget, so we are asking to recommend to the board to approve the combined list.
Any questions, any factual questions for Mr. Colletier before the chair invites a motion?
Just a quick comment. Excuse me, I'm battling a cold. We were excited that we're getting a better quality floor in the small gym than we originally had hoped. The architect recommended something superior, and we didn't know for sure if it was gonna fit in the numbers and it fit, so we're excited about that. And with a freshman boy basketball player, I can tell you that he's gonna, well, he's gonna, he's gonna say, well, why didn't this get done last year? So there'll be a lot of people that'll be excited about that getting done. So thank you.
And once again, this is all work that was identified.
That's right.
In the plan. Good to know that we're getting it done.
Other background, if actual questions before I invite a motion? Hearing none, the chair invites a motion to approve the second bid package.
So moved.
Member Davenport moves.
Second.
Vice President Boyle, seconds. Any discussion, pro or con? The chair invites a motion?
I know. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Terry Pabisich.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Bill White.
Aye. That motion passes. The second bid package has been approved. We move down, down to item eight, Old Business. I'll break this into two parts, 5.1 through 5.210. There's everything in Part 5. Does anybody wanna pull any of those out in Part 5 for specific discussion? If not, I'll make a motion to approve all of the second reading policies, beginning with 5.10 and extending down to 5.210. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Member Cupka, seconds. As always, these are the policies that have come back for second reading, and we've discussed this a number of times. Dr. Cupka and myself, Dr. McDonald, Dr. Smith, other people, we've all heard these, and we've gotten no feedback, I'm aware of, on any of these. Any commissary questions or pro or con statements before I invite a vote? Okay, call the vote.
Bill White.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye.
Keith Mattoon.
Aye.
Terry Pabisich.
Aye.
Julia Beckman.
Aye.
Deb Boyle.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. These policies have been approved. We have one more, the second reading policy, 7.30, attendance areas and transfers within district. There was a first reading, I don't recall exactly when, in the fall, I think.
September.
September. Dr. Cupka and I have gone back and forth with the policy committee numerous times, and basically, this version, I guess in some ways, starts from scratch, but captures, I think, the intent of the policy committee, and it has a strong support of the administration.
It also, Mr. White, that part of the change in the wording is a result of Dr. Smith's and Mr. Shock's work, looking at district maps and identifying, there is really a conflict between what our map showed and what the actual verbiage in this policy indicated.
I wonder about that.
There is a, a segment of land, I don't know how this ever came about, but there is a segment of land near Belmont and 59th Street. As the boundary progresses up Belmont Road, that actually splices a block in half. And that had to be rectified in the verbiage of the policy as, as well as in our, in our practices. So that is a more recent addition that was not necessarily shared at the first reading. But we do have a lot of confidence that that is, in fact, the boundary that we project on maps and that we have essentially used since the puffer hefty district.
This change.
Subsumed, was subsumed into District 58.
As long as it's clear to all the residents.
My only question was, I gave my policy book back to Joanne, so I didn't have the original policy to compare. And I wish that you had, yeah, I know, I didn't go online 'cause I didn't have the thing with me that day. But I wish you had put in the original one of this, so I could compare. Because I don't know which, where the changes were exactly. I saw you had one.
I thought the crossed-out parts were the original. No?
The crossed-out parts are the original.
Yeah. Oh, I thought you had more red.
Well, that's on the description.
I think there were some changes in the policy that we, you saw earlier on, but the changes in the actual boundary line is as it's presented.
Is, is the correct one. Yeah, yeah, okay, all right.
Any other questions or question information before I make a motion?
I think that's it. I wanted to ask those same questions about the very distinct streets and lines and whatever, but I've got that clarified.
I'll just, I'll make a general comment. I, how many, how many transfer requests do we typically have in a year? Is there, if you can even say?
I don't know, like, colleagues and the principals who get these firsthand?
Between the two schools.
Is that per school or is that total?
Total.
But some of them, and the reason I ask, some of them never get to this level. The parents talk to the principals and they're dropped. But there was an initiated request at some point.
Is there, would it be fair to say that we discourage or encourage? My perception is that we would discourage people from changing schools.
I think it's fair. I think we do discourage, because the intent of the policy is, in the 10 years I've worked in the district, is that the board establishes attendance areas for both schools, and we, we don't make, we make exceptions in extraordinary cases, but it's not the intent to make exceptions. The intent is that the board has established boundaries, and they should be well, well-known, and people live in the areas where they wish their kids to attend school.
I understand. What would be the, what would be the, the negative impact of granting the few requests that we get, though?
I think we do grant requests.
Okay.
I wouldn't say that we've never granted a request. I think we've granted requests almost every year. But there are, each time we have done that, it's on a case-by-case basis. Individual factual situation is important, is, we don't do precedent-setting type, we don't make precedent-setting decisions, so to speak. So we do make exceptions.
Okay. And are you the person who finally, who makes the final say on it?
I'm sure that's true, Mr. Davenport.
So, do you feel you have enough guideline to guide you, you know, enough, enough information to guide you in your decision-making on these things? Or do you feel that, that things are a little ambiguous? You feel it's clear?
I do.
Because I've, I've long felt that, that we should be a, can, have kind of a can-do sort of attitude, and that if a request is fair and reasonable, and so long as there isn't a population issue. I mean, I just can't imagine...
Chaos.
Really? Chaos?
Oh, yeah.
With the six, the six requests that we would get in a typical year?
It would be much more. That's right.
Based on what information do you have?
On past information.
Based on past information? So there was a time when we used to get a lot of requests?
Yes.
We did get more requests. There was a time when I was principal itself, we got, we, I would say we had more than 10 requests.
More than 10?
More than 10.
With, with one school at 3,100 students and the other at 2,200, I have a hard time seeing 10 as being a lot more than 6. And I, and it definitely doesn't reach the level of chaos.
It looks like in...
I'm interested in hearing history.
03, 04, 26 requests.
Okay.
But I, I do think it's important to note that the difference may be that because there are protocols for some of the requests, and people are aware that it's not, if you make the request, you can go, that, I think that probably limits the number of requests that we receive, because there is a protocol. And when parents inquire about the requests, they're told that you write a letter with a rationale, and you present it to your, to the home principal, who reviews it, and then...
Goes from there.
Yeah, sends it to the other principal. But I think if it was just, so I think it's the way that you look at it, and so if it was perceived differently, whereas it was, if you want to put in a request, as long as we think there's room, you can go, I think you'd see that number increase.
And would that, how would that be a problem for us?
Well, there is FTE implications with students moving back and forth. We start looking at FTE when the kids, you know, register, for example, in January. Do I have the right timeframe?
We certainly could have, you certainly could have time limitations on, I mean, that would, that would obviously come into play in your decision-making, right? I mean...
Could we? You would have to really take all that into consideration. I mean, it, it's more, it can be impactful. So it really is a discussion as far as what the purpose of the transfers is, if it isn't just an open district. I mean, you know, there, there are some staffing issues that go along with that. There are some things that you have to watch about balancing where student, particular student populations have the ability to go to the other school, because if you also transfer into the other high school, the parents are responsible for transportation, not the district per policy. So some parents are able to provide that, some are not. So then you potentially get into the have and the have-nots.
Yeah.
And so you could create some additional inequity. So I think you just have to take all those pieces into consideration. If you were to really think about opening it up beyond, right now, there are boundaries, North and South, and if there is a legitimate reason that a student needs to be in the other school, we consider those on a student-by-student basis. And, and so that's the way that we've, we've been looking at it.
I think there's also important to consider, I mean, you can look at it from a number of different frames, obviously. But I think, my understanding, the responsibility of the school board with regard to setting the boundaries is, is certainly efficiency of providing the service. Additionally, I think it's a responsibility and a goal of the school board that the educational experience and the opportunities available to students at both campuses is roughly equivalent, so that no student can say, I would've got a superior education.
Yeah.
At Downers Grove North.
True.
But I had to go to Downers Grove South, because I lived two blocks south of 55th Street, or vice versa. And so, the notion or the, the concept that we are working very hard to make sure it's an equivalent educational experience at both campuses, sort of begs the issue of, what is, what is the issue if you live in this community where you're obviously closer to one school than the other, and it's set up for the efficient delivery of a public service? What is the, what would be the rationale from that frame of creating an open enrollment? The problem doesn't necessarily exist.
I'm, I'm not talking about creating an open enrollment. I'm, I'm, what I'm looking at is, and I, and to be honest, I see this primarily as an issue maybe for some of our, our students who are coming from schools where, you know, they're very close to a boundary. For instance, at, at, some are resident, residents in Woodridge, where you're, where you're, you're going to school with a number of children, and then you find yourself having to go to a different high school than most everybody that maybe you were going to school with. And I guess what I'm looking at is just that we're, we're in a service situation here, and that we have an effort to be accommodating whenever we can, within reason. We have, we have to consider the number of students that each high school can accommodate, and, and there has to be limitations and, and guidelines here. But you said that you've said yes on occasion. Can you give me a couple of examples of when...
Been through this?
No, no, shh, shh.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Davenport is the fourth.
Sorry.
Sure. I'd be glad to do that, Mr. Davenport. Student who has, is being bullied, parents would like the student to have a fresh start, different set of friends, crisis in the family that, you know, the student has to move in with a relative for whatever reason, issue with, another issue with set of friends. It's not necessarily a bullying issue, but bad influence friends that parents would like the student to get away from, so he or she can get a fair start. Those would all be, I mean, those are all examples of things I recall acting on.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to ask a quick question. Mr. Davenport, we're also getting at fundamental due process in the sense that, as a board, we grant requests for expulsions and disciplinary matters, that we are the final say. Are you also suggesting that maybe the board should have the final say with the recommendation from the superintendent, so that one person necessarily isn't the end-all, the be-all, but that the board has some kind of ramification?
The reason I'm, the reason I'm bringing this up now, obviously, is that we're talking about the pol- about the policy. And, and this seems an appropriate time because the policy is what's supposed to be giving guidance from the board to the superintendent about how to, how to deal with this. And as I read this, you know, it's not as, it's not as clear-cut to me, but...
My question is, would you feel more comfortable with the board being the final arbiter of who gets to transfer and who does not get to transfer with the recommendation from superintendent and staff?
It'd be something I'd like to talk about.
If I could just interject, when we did this policy a few years ago, we had an extensive discussion on how it should be. And there were some who did feel it should have been the board to be the final arbiter. And then the decision was made by the board that it was really better. The board would be informed of the number of people every year, I think, and would be informed that a decision had been made. But it was, at least the majority of the board at the time, can't remember what the vote was, felt that it was best to handle, be handled by the administration. And I think it's worked for us. And I'm sorry I interjected before, but I just remembered before we had this specific policy, there were a lot of arbitrary decisions that were made. And I was getting phone calls from people who would say, "My child didn't get to go and somebody else's did and I don't know why." And it was because there wasn't a clear policy. And I think it's just like anything else. You just, you kind of draw the lines and you live by those lines and it's like living in a legislative district. You know, you're across the street from somebody else's representative and it just is that way. So, I think it's worked well for us and I think it's made it easier for the administration to have clear guidelines so that there wasn't this kind of push and pull. And gee, I know it was made this way last time, let's see what we can do this time. I just think it's worked well for us and I would not want to see it changed.
I would, if I can just add, I think, to your point, Keith, I think denying somebody the ability to come to school is very different than not a, than what school they would go to. And, and I would not support seeing this come before the board on a case-by-case basis. We had a lot of discussion about this. We went over, could we do an open admission policy?
Let me say, we had discussion with...
In the policy committee.
In the policy committee. Thank you. I just wanted...
You know, and I think it does become a question of equity. If we cannot afford, you know, the whole, if we're not prepared to allow, to provide transportation for other students, then I don't, I think we have to be very, very selective about who goes where. And my final point would be, I live actually a mile and a half closer to South. My children could walk to South. You know. And my children, my oldest daughter frankly, wanted to go to South because her friends went to South. She had to go to North and she's made a lot of new friends.
Sure.
I guess I just find it curious that we're in charge of taxing, we're in charge of suspension, expulsion, ultimately of hiring, that we would kind of cede this responsibility to one person. It's kind of curious to me.
I don't know that we necessarily cede it to one person.
No, I don't think it's just one person. Yeah. I think it's...
To make the final decision.
Well, yeah, but I think it goes through many people. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the building administrators. They, they have their group of administrators who discuss probably these very issues and, and come to a, an agreement on what would be the recommendation for the student. And then they then crawl up the chain of command as in any other situation. So...
Right. And just like those situations of discipline, we are the final arbiters. I don't know why we would cede that responsibility ultimately.
Well, I, I don't think it's in the best interest of our students or our families for us to be making those decisions.
But they're the ones who elected us.
Yeah, but not for that. I believe that they elected us to set the budget and to hire the superintendent. If I remember correctly, those were our...
There's other people haven't spoken yet.
Well, just a real quick answer. Do we not have the authority to reshape the boundary when we like to?
No, we do not.
We do not?
We, we have to discuss it and it isn't, it isn't something that comes before us and at a whim.
But within the district, we do not have the parameters that set our own boundaries within our own district?
Well, sure we do.
Yes, we do. But, but I'm saying that it's not...
Take a lot of talk.
Yes. That would be a community effort also. We would, we would not do that without focus groups of some kind.
I'm not saying that.
And, and we don't have...
Instead of having a debate about what might be tangential, is there anybody else who wants to say anything who hasn't spoken yet?
I would like to comment a little bit to the historical perspective, first of all. And I did know, I know that a member, Pijavisic, and then even Lisa, had said something about if you had opened it up, that it would be chaos. You know, I've lived in Downers Grove all my life and I know that South High was erected in like nineteen sixty-seven. And I do know many, many years back, it was much more open. And people were along the boundaries pretty much allowed to choose. And so, to my knowledge, there has never been chaos as these two schools stand today and over the years. I fall in line more, I believe, with Mr. Davenport, only that we are, we are providing services. I like to be a district that is a can-do district, that we try to be accommodating to our parents and our students. There are a couple of things that bother me about this policy. And one is, it says, "The granting of an exception in any one instance shall not constitute a precedent with respect to any future request for an exception." And I do understand that, you know, it is a case, can be a case-by-case basis. But there also has to be some sort of a precedent because otherwise we, we hide behind a policy. What happens when we ultimately learn that one student is granted a waiver, a request waiver, to go to the other school? And then it comes before the board that another student, his parents grant, asked for the exact same thing for basically the same reasons and then they were denied? So, I, I wonder about the fairness issue and how we, how we know about that. And so there are, there are a few things, there are a few things that, that bother me about that. I'm not advocating for an open-door policy, but I, I don't think that, over the years where we've had any more than twenty-five requests, and that was the most, that that would cause such a hardship to the district. I do believe that if something were to come about, that you had a mass exodus from one school to another, then I, then I think that that would be something I'm sure you would need to look at and find out why that was happening and then address that issue. But I guess I just would like to see us to be more accommodating and I want to make sure as a board, as a, as a policymaking board, that it is a matter of fairness, that, that we don't have those kind of situations arise where, you know, there are a couple of different sets of, you know, parents that are requesting possibly for the same reason and one is, one is granted and one is not. And I know that has been a problem in the, in the past. I know we are trying to adequately deal with that. And so I guess I, I am just open to looking at this. I'm just open to looking at this.
We, we do approve more than we deny, absolutely.
Okay.
And it's, it's rare that there is a denial. And if there is a denial, it typically is because it's, there really isn't a rationale for really needing to go to the other building. So, it's not often, we, we don't have that many requests. The requests start with a conversation at the building level. The parents provide a rationale. The building principal will review the rationale, have a conversation if need be to clarify, to really understand the reason. And then, you know, the, the two principals decide together whether it makes sense to honor that.
And I guess that would be my other, I guess that would be my other somewhat issue because you then, we are definitely making the decision for that child and overriding maybe what parents or somebody else... I think, I look at it more as a collective decision-making process. And I do believe that parents, you know, ultimately and, you know, should have a say over what they think is best for their child.
Actually, I don't think I've spoken yet.
Please.
First, I do want to disassociate myself from the comments about chaos. I don't believe a more liberal policy would lead to chaos. That said, through the policy committee, the administration has been pretty consistent, has been very consistent, that they want the policy as it's written. And my own thinking about it, some of this district's past experience demonstrates what happens when we let the school board make the decision rather than the administrators. It becomes political.
That's right.
It does become political. And there have been ca, and I think this, and well, the words are arbitrary and capricious and whether it reached that level legally is a matter of opinion. But I don't think the prior board applied the policy in a fair and even-handed manner. I simply do not. And I'm not sure a school board is the right place for these types of decisions.
Okay.
I am very sympathetic to the idea of being a can-do district. I'm very sympathetic to that. However, earlier I was praised for my wordsmithing. And I don't know how to write that down. Okay? And that's where it comes down to. I don't know how to express that in a way that couldn't be twisted in a wrong situation. I really don't know.
Fair enough.
Do that. And, you know, with the future board members and stuff, if somebody comes up with a clever way of saying it that captures what you want, you're formally to vote for it, that's okay. Because I don't think it'd be chaos. And I do think the school board should not do it because of personalities and things that cause decisions to be made for the wrong reasons. And that's why it should be the administration. If we have a problem, we can say, "Look, you're not doing it right." You know, are we going to second-guess grades? I sure hope not. I sure hope we don't start second-guessing grades unless there's evidence of a truly abusive situation. You know, I mean, I mean, if evidence comes that things are happening that really shouldn't and the administration fails to take care of it, but I am astounded if that ever happened in this district with our current administration. But that's the type of thing that, you know, it's not that we have carte blanche, but this is something, I think, and absolutely it should be done in a fair and even-handed manner. But that's making sure you have a fair and even-handed administrator.
Mm-hmm.
A fair and even-handed superintendent. And we won't talk about the past. Not, not from the TV. So, I disassociate myself from the idea that it's chaos. And my reason for supporting it is that every member of the administration that I've spoken to about this has been solid.
Solid.
That this is the policy they want.
Okay.
And if others feel differently, I mean, that and the fact that, I spent nine months trying to think up a way to write it, to get this, this being can-do. And I can. If someone else can, wonderful. But I can't. And that's why we just want to give the administration what they want in this particular instance. Later, maybe, it's the larger thing, something that also occurs to me about like choice, that goes in the allocation of resources. And if you give choice, you really have to have excess capacity.
Mm-hmm.
Because without excess capacity, you really can't give choice because there's only so many chairs. And who gets which chair?
Right.
So, so if, if we're going to have true parental choice about choose schools, we need empty chairs every year. Otherwise, there's no place for, for someone to go. And do we want to spend more money to have excess chairs at both high schools that we don't otherwise need so parents can have choice?
Mm-hmm.
And that ends up costing us more money. I think the, I, we should have passed it out. The IASB policy pretty much gives the superintendent pretty wide, wide latitude.
Okay.
So, that's so, like I said, I'll be very, very clear, I disassociate myself from the chaos. That's such a good rule to follow generally. I do believe that part of the reason why we need a clear, unambiguous policy is because of the fact that these decisions happen political. And I don't think elected school board members should be the ones making the decision as do gets to go to which school. Because I think that just opens up a stall of kinds of canned worms. My opinion. Anybody want to add anything?
If I could just add, the idea of a can-do district, couldn't agree with that more. But I think when Dr. McDonald spoke to making the two schools as, as equal as possible so that there are great opportunities at each building, that's the can-do attitude. And I think so many efforts have been made, successful efforts, to bring those schools together. I think that's where we need to put the effort, is to making each school just as good a place as it can possibly be.
I would just, I, I think both Bill and Julia, I concur with everything they said, with one exception, I don't think it really ended up with being what administration wanted in terms of the policy. I think we had a lot of long debates about what was fair and equitable. And I would say it ended up being what everybody on the policy committee, which is...
It's fair and equitable.
Wanted.
Okay.
I'll defer to that. I think that's good.
I'll say, first of all, in terms of recent history, you know, the reason we're having the discussion now is because in September, I asked that, that you all might have more discussion about it and come back and we would talk. So, my intention tonight was not to belabor the point.
I apologize. I understand.
And a new piece of information to me is what Lisa just offered a little bit ago, is that, that we say yes more than we say no. And, and that's good to hear because it's, I think it's important that there are, it's like any other, it's why we have variances with our zoning ordinances and such. I mean, there are rare occasions where the one-size-fit-all doesn't fit. And, and in those rare circumstances, they, they deserve a fair hearing. And it sounds to me like that's going on and, and so I rest.
Okay. Well, actually, I don't think I've made the motion yet. So, actually, there is chance for further discussion. I move that we adopt policy seven-three-oh as presented.
I second.
Any further discussion? Anybody have anything they didn't get a chance to say yet?
I guess, I, I don't, you know, it just says that they're granted rarely and only when compelling individual circumstances exist. Is there any way that there's, any way that we can spell out maybe what those would be for people to know? I mean, otherwise, it does seem sort of, I mean, I mean, what are those?
Well, doesn't it say there's supposed to be some administrative procedures about?
Correct.
And that's where we spell it out.
Right. And is, are those available, though? I mean, are those available to parents?
Think that they, the forms?
I would think, forms, like an attachment to this, so they would...
Well, the administrative policy is publicly available.
Well, and I, I think that the beginning is, is to discuss it with your building principals or whatever and they can give you some guidelines, correct?
Yeah, it's really, it's really individually student-based. The parents present a letter with the rationale. So, there is not a list of, here are acceptable transfer request reasons or rationales. It really is student-based. And when a parent makes a request, it is considered based on that student and what's going on in that family. And it really does vary a lot. Often involves a lot of more, could involve more social, emotional, very, you know...
Right.
The rationale could be very personnel. So, that's really why the buildings have the best understanding of what's really going on for that student inside and outside of school and why that transfer might be in the student's best interest. So, no, there's not a formal list of, here are the reasons. Okay. Really it's student-based.
I think it'd be very difficult to make a formal list of reasons and not miss something.
Mm-hmm.
It might be one of those, here are some possible reasons, but not limited to, or whatever. Right.
Or whatever, yeah, not limited to. It's true.
Yeah. So, you know, the definition of compelling is along the lines of being persuasive.
It is. I think mostly it's just a matter of a fair, a fairness issue and, and then relying on our administration to make those fairly.
To decisions fairly, right.
Yeah. And not, yeah. I think that would have been my issue.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add? Okay. We'll call the vote.
Bill White?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
No.
Terry Pijavisic?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
No.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Okay. That motion passes. Now, we move on to new business. There are three policies. This is the same procedure we've been going along before. And you can all talk about those next month unless you have any questions or immediate...
Don't you want to be in the audience, Bill? I'll be talking.
Well, I don't know, maybe. So, basically, it's the same thing. At this point, I would say, "Talk to me," but that won't be any good. You're perfectly welcome to. But talk to Dr. Cupka.
We'll have to establish new policy committee.
Right. That's true.
Can I ask a quick question?
Come on, Mr. Dr. McDonald.
Can I ask a quick question about these three? Just, is there any alignment with IASB language on these or not?
I believe so.
Yes? Okay.
It's alignment with IASB language and a lot of the deleted policies and the language or changes that related to the contract. So, there should be nothing.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to the second reception of visitors. Anybody out there come? Anybody out there come up with something they want to say? Okay. We'll close second reception of visitors. Communications and announcements. We have a Lenn report.
The next Lenn meeting will be on Thursday, April 25th. This will be the Lenn Dinner and Dialogue, which will be held at Matia Valley High School in Aurora. There's going to be more details, obviously, to follow. The other thing is that we've been getting regular updates from Pagagnos, the executive director. As Springfield is currently in session, there are a lot of things that are starting to move very quickly to the regions. And so I would encourage you to, to watch your email and other reports as I'm sure Dr. McDonald will keep us updated as things continue to move.
Could I ask one question? The, the bill that was up that would have put a floor under.
Franks' bill?
Yeah.
That was defeated.
Defeated.
It was defeated. It's like dead.
Yes.
It won't come back in a shell bill or?
Oh, it's good.
Well, it's come back three years in a row.
Yeah, true. Right.
And comments by Representative Franks suggest he'll bring it up again.
Okay.
But it was defeated.
But it was defeated. Thanks. That was scary. It always is.
Okay. Sessid report?
I have to admit, I left my printed report at home. I'll make it available for the, I'll give it to, perhaps to Joanne to, or forward it to you. But Sessid, of course, is going along fine and we are going to be heading into negotiations with our certified staff. In a, in a couple of weeks, I'll be on that negotiating team. And we are also redoing our policies too. And it is a long, slow procedure. It's been three or four years for us too. And it's beginning to happen, but we're educating kids in a really good way.
Illinois Humanities Council?
My first meeting is the 25th of April. I'll report on it then. I thought it would be earlier, but it's 25th of April.
My Foundation report?
Well, tonight was the Burger Wars and.
Still have 15 minutes.
Yeah, yeah. You've still got time to rush over there to Tom and Eddie's and get your burger. They were both very well represented. Several of us were there and I saw Scott there and I know Steve was there in spirit on that. But they were, they were duking it out. The Mustang and the Trojan were out front.
Were the mascots there?
Yes, the mascots were there. And so we're hoping that a lot of burgers were sold for the Foundation, so.
Okay. Any other announcements? There are upcoming board meetings on May 6th. I will swear in the new board member. Hi, Rick. And then after that, we will adjourn and then the new board will form and elect its officers. And then there'll be a regular business meeting on May 20th. Is there anything we want, need to do before we adjourn? Chair invites the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Well, motion is second. Mrs. Beckman and Mr. Septembern, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.